Good evening. Welcome to this evening's candidate forum sponsored by the Journal and the League of Women Voters, New Ulm. My name is Linda Heiney. I will serve as a moderator for tonight's forum with the Brown County Commissioner candidates who are standing for election in the general election in November eighth. We have four candidates for two, excuse me, two candidates for each of two seats, District One and District Two County Commissioners. The League has been a presence in New Ulm for eighty years. We are an active group of women and men who believe that democracy is strengthened when citizens become informed voters. We are a nonpartisan political organization encouraging informed and active participation in government. We do not support political parties or endorse candidates. We strive to influence public policy through education and advocacy. Tonight's forum is being aired live on New Ulm Community Access Television and KNUJAM. We request no taping or recording of the event by anyone other than members of the invited media, and please turn off your cell phones during the event. We'll begin tonight with introductory remarks lasting up to a minute and a half by each candidate. Following their introductions, each candidate will respond to a question that had been submitted to them in advance. We will then be open to questions from the listening audience as well as those present here in the city council chambers. Questions can be written out by those present and given to an usher, and you will recognize the ushers by the fact that they're members of the League, and they should all be wearing League of Women Voters buttons. If you are listening or watching from home, you can call in with your questions. The phone number is (276) 8591. The candidates will each have one minute to respond to the questions that are posed here tonight, and then each will also have a one-minute opportunity to respond. So we will hear from each of the candidates twice, potentially on each question, and we are gonna just go down, ask all of the candidates the same questions. We aren't dividing it into two forums for each seat. We have timekeepers here in the audience who will be signaling the candidates when they're getting close to the end of their time period. I believe we have a fifteen-second warning and a stop sign that will be shown to you. The questions are all screened by the League. Questions on similar issues might be consolidated or rephrased. Questions that are deemed hostile, antagonistic, friendly, supportive, or of gratuitous content will not be accepted. The questions must be directed to pertinent issues of this elective office and not be related to personal matters. At the end of the forum, all the questions become the property of the League of Women Voters. If anyone has a question that they feel has not been adequately addressed, I would suggest that you contact the candidate directly after the forum to discuss your issues more in-depth. Following the question period, each of the candidates will be given an opportunity to give a closing statement, and that will last for one minute. Before we begin with our opening statements, I will repeat the telephone number, and that is (276) 8591. And with that, we will begin, and maybe we should just go down the line and start with Mr. Borkert.
Thank you. Evening, everyone. I'd like to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I'd also like to thank everyone that joined us, including the other candidates. I believe this makes it a full event. Just a little bit about myself. My name is David Borkert. I'm married. My wife's name is Carrie. We have a son together, Dylan. He's a senior at Minnesota Valley Lutheran High School. As far as experience, I'm a police commander with the New Ulm Police Department. I have twenty-three years' law enforcement experience. I'm also the City of New Ulm's Emergency Management Director, and I'm a private business owner. As far as my background, I'm a proud veteran of the United States Army. I'm also a veteran of Minnesota National Guard. My education, I have a Master of Business Administration degree, MBA from Concordia University, St. Paul. I have a Bachelor of Arts degree in Spanish from Southwest State University, and a Bachelor of Science degree in law enforcement from Manhasset State University. My specialized training is I'm a proud graduate of the FBI National Academy, 233rd Session, Quantico, Virginia. Far as community involvement, I've been involved in several civic organizations. The Veteran Service Organizations that I'm involved in and a member of is Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW, and also the American Legion. I've served as a past commander for the Legion for three years. The reason I'm running is I believe we're in a challenging era, and I'm the best person to serve during this era. Thank you.
Mr. Golden.
Hello. I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters, and I'd like to thank everybody else who showed up this evening. And I also would like to thank the taxpayers of Brown County and everybody else who's in my district. I grew up in Surles. I come from a family of ten, of course the baby, and the best-looking one. I'm married to Lisa. We live in New Ulm. I've lived in New Ulm my whole entire life. With this job, becoming County Commissioner, I'll be working full-time, not part-time, and I'll be willing to, I'm gonna be serving the, I'm gonna vote my conscience for what I believe is best served to citizens of Brown County. Other things I've been involved in, I've been involved in the New Ulm Chamber. I've been involved in the CBB. I've been involved in a lot of different past, past different things, as far as community things. I serve right now is on, well, actually, I've been in business for twenty-five years. That's my big background. I've had a bar experience, my previous convenience store, Quick Super Stop and Wash, which is now the convenience store, Quick Trip, and so that's why I think I want to be your County Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Berg.
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters also. This is a good forum to have. It's informative for people out there. I'm Tony Berg. I'm running for County Commissioner, District Two, and I was born and raised in this area, raised on a dairy farm in Segal Township. I'm one of nine children, the seventh one, hopefully that's lucky. And being on a dairy farm taught me the value of hard work and instilled in me a work ethic that I still have today, so I keep busy, and I keep busy farming, my own farm out in Segal Township, and I also own Tony Berg Construction LLC, put up mostly egg buildings, farm shops, farm, excuse me, farm machine sheds, et cetera. I'm running because I have a desire to serve the people of Brown County, and I think I can do it well, and I think my experience in what I've done in farming and in construction will serve the people well. Thank you.
Mr. Kluxim.
I am Roger C. Kluxim. My parents did not give me a middle name, and so I use every opportunity I can to publicize my middle initial as C. I'm here tonight because I'm asking for your assistance in my desire to serve the citizens of Brown County. I believe I'm qualified for this position for a number of reasons. The first reason is I know how to manage financial resources. I can say this because I have served as a commission, on a commission that oversaw the fourth-largest parochial school system in America. I ran national teachers' conventions. I'm on the national, I was on the National Board of Christian Life Resources, and I was the principal of a school. All of those, as you note, don't serve me. They basically serve others. My fiscal decisions are going to be fiscally prudent, risk-sensitive, and cost-effective. The second reason why I think that I'm qualified is I'm an advisor-advocate. I have served for many years as an advisor, confidant to students, colleagues, friends, and family. I'm an active listener. I have a critical, insightful mind. I'm a decision-maker, and I have no difficulty advocating for justifiable causes. Put all those together, I have one more too, but I'll skip that. Just put all those together, and I think it adds up to a commissioner that is a servant and a leader. Thank you.
Okay. The candidates will each have two minutes to respond to the following question, and we will begin with Mr. Golden. If elected to this office, what would you most like to accomplish in your term as Commissioner?
Taxpayers of Brown County. Being a county commissioner, I think, means that you need to be approachable, and you need to be a type of commissioner that's gonna sit back, have a cup of coffee with your friends, and people that have a problem or have different situations. You want to be approachable. You want to be able just to take things in, watch, observe, and then make your decision based on what you believe is the best for the community. As far as taxes are concerned, in the past few years, everybody knows that Brown County's probably gone up two to five percent, two to six percent. City of New Ulm, two to five percent, two to six percent, and then lately, we've had the school district referendum. With the taxes going up constantly like that, how are you gonna be able to manage every year where it's out of control? So what we want to do is, basically, I want to approach the department heads, administrators, fellow county commissioners, and employees to see how we can handle reducing taxes, what we can do to handle different situations to make things more affordable. So with that, I really want to work with everybody else. I have no ties to the county. I have no ties to the city. I have no ties to the state. So as far as working with programs for the state and everything else, everybody always says, "What are you running on?" Well, I tell you what. We have so many programs right now that we can't afford. We can't afford any new programs. Right now, we have to try to manage the programs that we have. So we need to sit down and listen to everybody. One of the things, ideas we might want to do is go to the state legislature and try to increase the LGA money. We have a billion, billion and a half dollars, and thanks, everybody, for voting for Jeff Golden.
Next, we'll call in Commissioner Berg.
Not yet, ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
And I will accept what the voters decide. I don't bring a big issue to the board. I think the board has been doing fairly well. In fact, they won an award for doing fairly well over the last several years. The budget has been going up close to the pace of inflation, in which you kind of can expect that, and also county boards, as Jeff alluded to, has to deal with mandates that come from the state. What often happens is the mandates come in, give you a certain amount of money, get a program started, and then after four years, they leave you on your own to fund it yourself, and those kind of things we have to work with the legislators, leaders against. The biggest issue for me, and what I want to focus on, would be the roads and the bridges, and the county's been, again, I think, doing a decent job with this. But the reason the roads and the bridges is because every program in the county is important. Everyone, every department is doing their job. They are serving people. But everybody depends on the roads and bridges for everything that goes on, from the safety, you know, everything. Your goods and services come there, and I, as a farmer, that's where my stuff has to haul in there, too. So that matters, and that's a focus. I want to keep that good. And the other thing roads and bridges do is it's also an image thing. If people are coming here to start a business, and if they're looking at our roads, or wherever they're gonna put their business is off a county road, you want that road to be good. That helps in the decision also. So I think that one blankets the most. That's where I'll, it's a main focus of mine, but like I said, every department matters, and every department's important. Thank you.
Mr. Kluxim.
To be honest with you, I was uncertain about the intent of this question. Does it mean that a commissioner can set his own agenda and implement something for his own self? That could be part of the question. Does it mean that you're gonna open the door and ask for criticism of Brown County, or did accomplishments mean what I'm going to do personally? So I'm gonna start with the last one and hopefully answer all of them. My personal top priority, we deserve the citizens of Brown County. I will serve with the same intensity with which I campaigned. I was happy to visit over four hundred farms and many of the people in the city. They opened their door to me, and I hope it sets up a relationship in the future. Number two priority for me is to continue to study county government. I don't think any of us are experts at it, and I started my study, and I want to continue that. Number three, I want to set up a relationship with the other commissioners of honesty, integrity, and mutual commitment to values. As far as the county is concerned, my top priority there is fiscal conservative, for which, as Tony says, this county has been noted and recognized. A flourishing culture is fueled by the economics. Who influences that? The county commissioners do by setting the levy. So I would want to say that I'm gonna continue the conservative effort that the county has made to make this county flourish because of the taxes. The second one is I want a priority for the county to create an awareness of the future. We are an aging population. We are going to have a shortage of workforce in this county. We have drug abuse, which is increasing, and consequently, children who are abused and neglected. So I'd like to create a culture of calculated change to meet the imminent challenges that we're gonna see in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Borkert.
From the very beginning of my campaign, I had said that within the first term, what I'd like to accomplish and work on is emergency preparedness, because we're not prepared, lower taxes, because there's a lot of people on fixed incomes, and we need to address that, and veteran support. With the limited time that I have at this point, I'm gonna focus on veteran support. We're approaching Veterans Day. We have homeless veterans living in Brown County and in the City of New Ulm. We also have a lot of veterans in need. We have a lot of the requests that are coming through, they're four essentials. We're talking about food, clothing, lodging, emergency healthcare, and transportation. I've, I know the Veteran Service Officer quite well. His name is Greg Peterson. He does an excellent job. I've talked with him over the years. I've worked with him over the years, and during my campaign, I've reached out and talked with every department head, and I've talked with him a number of times, and I've asked him, I said, "When elected, what would I be able to do to serve you, to support you as a department head?" And he's explained, he said, "We have a higher demand for our services than we've ever seen before." And the reason for that is we have an aging population, so there's individuals that need more services now than they did ten years ago because they're aging. The other part of that is, we've been at war for fifteen years, so there's essentially more people coming back off the battlefield and off active duty that simply need assistance. So it's increasing his demand significantly, and he's not able to respond to all of that. So as far as a solution, I always like to be able to have measurable solutions. In talking with him, the essential resources that our Veteran Service Officers would need is essentially personnel-driven, and it's not, we're not talking about a large amount of money. We're talking about literally fifteen thousand dollars a year. I'm committed to do that. I'm also committed to work with the Veteran Service Organizations to provide a structure, because every dollar that we spend on our Veteran Service Office or organizations supply basically nine to tenfold. So I mean, it's a very efficient way of using our money and supporting veterans. I'm committed to do that within my first term. Thank you.
Okay. The remaining questions will have a shorter response time, or a shorter time to answer, and then each of you will have a response. So we've received some questions from the audience already, and the first one, I think it is Mr. Berg's turn to go first. The question is, "The courthouse was last remodeled in nineteen seventy. Since that time, many satellite offices have been added to accommodate the growing staff. Do you feel the courthouse should be renovated?"
I'll admit, I haven't given that issue a lot of thought. I would have to, if I'd be elected as County Commissioner, I'd have to see what it's like in there and take a look at all of it. That's the only way to answer that question. Until I know the full issue, until I see the offices and see what's going on there, I can't give that a full answer.
Mr. Kluxim.
Visit the office of Sleda and Nysley and the other people there. Their desks are almost butting up to each other. They have materials that make the place, and I'm not apologizing for them. They would admit the same thing. Sleda has, they have no place to file things. It looks like a mess. I think sometime in the future, we are gonna have to consider either adding on to the courthouse or making one centralized facility for all the offices. And we are not downsizing. I mean, if you look at those that are being added, a new lawyer to the probate system, and Ruth Schaefer in her office added another person, I don't think we're gonna go down. We're gonna need more space. It'll be a looming challenge in the future, in my mind.
Mr. Borkert.
I agree that we have to do some type of remodeling. We have to certainly work on those issues. During my campaign, you've heard me talk several times over lean, about lean management. Every department head, and I've talked to every department head at least once, every one is fighting for space. And within the county, I have this, you know, firsthand knowledge of this from working closely with the county, is that we even have, you know, certain departments, we have certain space that's being used by state agencies, and they're not paying, they're not paying anything. I think that there's more of an effective way of utilizing that. I've even talked with individuals. The example is the State Patrol. I've talked with members of the State Patrol. They have a budget for it. They actually have other ulterior sites, but they essentially, you know, if you can get something for free, why not? So that's something I want to work on, and I just think we need to use our space more wisely. Thank you.
Mr. Golden.
As far as when you walk into the courthouse, I think right now, it almost feels like an institution. I think we make, we need to make it more user-friendly. So when you walk into courthouse, eventually, I would like to have an information center right up front, secure possibly with behind glass, because different things are happening these days. Also, the county commissioners' chambers, there's no other exit, there's no other way out except for the window if something would happen. So yeah, we're gonna have to take a look at possibly even putting departments together, consolidating departments as we grow. So yeah, I would like to try to make the courthouse more user-friendly. That would be a goal of mine. Of course, we can only do that with, if the budget, you know, calls for it. You know, there's just some things that we'll have to address, and some things we won't be able to.
Mr. Berg, would you like any further comment on that question?
I was just gonna say that in any situation, any building, anywhere, there comes a time when you renovate. I mean, after a certain amount of years. So you gotta take a look at it and see what needs to be done, and if you have the funding for it, as Jeff said.
Anything further, Mr. Kluxim?
I'm picking up on what Jeff said relative to the budget. This would take a major bonding issue. I think the last major building bonding issue was the law enforcement center, and you said that was in seventy. I think we should anticipate that down the road, because I think it's inevitable.
Mr. Borkert.
One thing that I'd like to expand on is I think there's some missed opportunities with cost sharing. I've talked with the department heads, and they've even mentioned, a lot of services, a lot of even council chambers, commissioner chambers, they could have more high-tech resources. They could have probably better rooms and stuff like that if they shared with other agencies, including the city. Maybe in some cases, even other counties, depending on what that would look like. So I would certainly be looking at some type of cost-sharing arrangement. Also, the government, both federal and state, they reward efficiency. So if you're looking for opportunities like that, you can actually get some additional funding. So with a tight budget, you know, we want to be fiscally conservative. That's one way that we could be able to provide that, again, with common sense approaches. Thank you.
Mr. Golden.
I'm gonna get some of that one and a half billion dollars, and I'm gonna go after it, that the state has. That's how I'm gonna handle it.
Okay. Well, here's a broader question. What unmet infrastructure needs do you see throughout the county? And Mr. Kluxim would be first.
You know, that begs the question of what is infrastructure? Most people think it's just roads and bridges and culverts. It's really everything that the county does. I think you're fully aware that we are behind according to the industry standard of the roads, even though the majority of them, ninety percent on the PQI, me being an educator, should be PIQ, but it's Pavement Quality Index, most of them are fair and above. However, we're behind. And I applaud the commissioners for two things. They passed the transportation sales tax, which is going to fix County Road Twenty-nine. It'll net one point five million over the next six years, and then the last bonding issue. And I applaud that, because it isn't, it's money, but it's not gonna raise the levy for anyone.
Mr. Borkert.
I would, I'd like to comment on the roads as well. In speaking with decision-makers regarding that, we're approximately twenty-five million behind. With the recent bonding, we're talking about catching up with five million. I certainly supported that or would support that. I think we've missed out on some opportunities. We've had low interest, historically low interest, and we've also had low costs of oil, which makes everything a little bit more affordable as far as the product that's involved with upgrades. So I would certainly want to be working on that, because I think Mr. Berg had mentioned, a lot of businesses, they don't only look at what your financial situation is now, but they're also looking at in the future. So if you have roads that are broken down and busted, and bridges that aren't quite meeting what their expectation is, I think that that's has some impact on economic development. So that would be certainly something I'd want to address.
Mr. Golden.
You know, I concur with both these guys about the roads and bridges, and one of the things that happens, you know, our farm machinery's getting bigger and bigger, and so with that, you know, the county roads, the township roads, they're gonna have to be rebuilt, too, because as we get bigger and bigger equipment, the infrastructure can't handle it. Pictures are gonna have to be made bigger. So yeah, there's gonna be a lot of work, and we're gonna have to pull up our sleeves, and that's why I'm your full-time county commissioner. It's willing to go to work for you.
Mr. Berg.
Well, roads issue was one that I brought up as my major issue. You want to go after the roads, fixing them. I applaud the bonding issue. I think the amount is about right, and because if you go too far ahead, you're gonna fix a lot, and then retract a little, and then fix a little more, and you create a push-and-shove type of fixing. You want to be doing a certain amount every year, and you keep your employees busy and steady that way. In saying that, I would also push for more from the local government or for roads and bridges to increase that budget a little bit so we can keep pace and keep going. Thanks.
Mr. Kluxim, did you have any response?
Yeah, I don't know if I made a point of it. There is no tax levy with this bonding, because it's on the state revenue, which has a limit to it. The state revenue can only give you so much money, and so we're capped, because my question is, why five million? Why not ten million? Well, there are two reasons. Number one, that fund is capped. Number two, you don't want to bite off more than you can chew. A five-million-dollar project is gonna tax our engineers and our departments to get that done next year, and so I think it's a reasonable amount, and I agree with Dave. You gotta look at, this is an opportune time with low interest, low oil prices. It's a good time. I applaud the commissioners.
Mr. Borkert, any response?
I don't really have anything to add, other than it would certainly be, I'd consider it a high priority. Roads and bridges need to be high priority for several reasons, and again, one of the biggest is, I think, economic development. Thank you.
Mr. Golden.
I have nothing else to say. I agree with everything that's said.
Mr. Berg, anything further?
No.
All right. Still with sort of some broad topics here. Describe the efforts the county commissioners could take proactively relating to long-range planning. And Mr. Borkert would be first. And Mr. Barker would be first.
I would totally support that for long-range planning, that, first of all, I think discussions like this are very healthy. And I'd be looking for, in fact, I've even mentioned that on my website, I'd be looking at having monthly meetings. Actually, I've already called it, the third Thursday of every month at eight-thirty. And, you know, we can certainly change that from there, but I think getting that type of impact from conversations from people is important. As a Legion commander, we had started strategic planning meetings, and I was the one that had started that. And it was amazing, the information that we got from that, as far as productive use of time. I mean, it was there, and that would be something I'd certainly wanna lead on and encourage the county to do. And also talking with the department heads, I think that's very important. I think maybe it's slightly underutilized, and that's something I would certainly wanna take us in that direction. Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Yeah, I would love to have a countywide retreat. Invite different business people, farmers, department heads, administrators, possibly people from other counties also around in the area. I wanna really emphasize, I'm trying to, you know, the employees are the backbone of Brown County. So, a lot of times, we always forget about taking a look at the employees and different ideas what they might have. So, I think we wanna work together, form a retreat, set up goals for the future, and move forward and try to work off what's best for the county.
Mr. Berg?
I think they're alluding to it a little bit here on my right. One of the bigger assets we have in this county is our department heads are really good people. And in the course of their activities, they go to a lot of meetings. They're learning about their various departments, their industries, whatever they're dealing with, and they're hearing about what they think is coming down in the future. So, for me, those people are gonna be the biggest asset on looking forward, you know, in addition to the commissioners themselves looking into the future. Thanks.
Mr. Cluxey?
Brown County is not unique. My perspective of being a commissioner that looks into the future, there are challenges. Ten thousand people per day are gonna retire in the United States over the next nineteen years. The aging group is going to put taxes, tax, anything that Brown County services can do. That's number one. Number two, the workforce. Brown County is going to have to do some kind of planning to attract people to live here. Young people with families like to live here. But you gotta address wages, broadband, housing, daycare. This isn't gonna happen as a reaction. If you do nothing, it'll only be reaction and proactive. So, I think the four challenges that I mentioned in my introduction all have to be addressed in some kind of summit to plan for the long range.
Mr. Berg, or Barker, do you have anything, any follow-up?
Yeah, I would like to, you know, stress that I think we really need to rely heavier on our department heads. You know, we're hiring them for those reasons. They've been promoted to that level for some reason, and they're our subject matter experts. And again, I've talked to every department head, some of them several times, and they've told me that sometimes if they have some new creative idea, they've been squashed a little bit, 'cause they're like, "Well, don't worry about what's going on across the hall in another department." I don't think that's right. That's something that I'd certainly wanna change, because it's for the betterment of the entire county.
Mr. Golden?
I just wanna remind everybody, next Wednesday and Thursday, the New Ulm Foundation, which is still in Brown County, is having a retreat. And I encourage everybody in the audience, whoever wants to show up, or the county commissioners to show up. And it's gonna be held next Wednesday and Thursday.
Mr. Berg?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Cluxey?
I said, other counties have addressed this already. There is a Southern Minnesota initiative program that is addressing some of these already, especially with the shortage in the workforce. And so, there are organizations out there in other counties that are addressing the problems, and we should certainly be active in engaging them.
Okay. According to the Journal, Brown County is one of few counties without the capability of reverse nine-one-one or I-Paws or I-P-A-W-S. Should this be pursued, and why, or why not? Mr. Golden?
As a matter of fact, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Huffman the other day. And we talked a little bit about that. And I think eventually we need to pursue this. And I think Mr. Huffman is a very capable sheriff, and I think he has some great ideas, and he's an asset to have to the county. And when he feels it appropriate to bring it to the table, to the commissioners, he'll bring it to the table. And I think that's why his decision to make him, you know, he's in charge of that department, so he needs to bring it to the table.
Mr. Berg?
Well, these are the times we live in, and it's certainly something to look at. The question I had, and maybe Dave could answer it right now, that doesn't cause any kind of Gawker effect, does it? You know, where people now know something's going on, and then they go and look? Do you know?
Maybe you can just respond to it when it's your...
Okay. It's just one of the things when I was looking it over. But any kind of these programs to enhance safety, enhance warning in case something is going on, we have to look at it all the time and decide which ones are gonna be feasible, which ones work the best. So, I'm willing to look at it and see what it is.
Mr. Cluxey?
Times are a-changing. Four or five years ago, when there was a shooting, it made news and it never dwindled. Now, we've become accustomed to violence in the cities. We're becoming culturally callous. And I think as far as long-range planning, nine-one-one reverse is almost a must. Because how else are we, in our laissez-faire approach to this, gonna say, "Well, it's just gonna happen"? I think it'd be very proactive to do nine-one-one. We've all been in areas where the Amber Alert goes off, and every cell phone in the airport in Denver goes off, because some child is missing. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't install it in rural Minnesota.
Mr. Barker?
Reverse nine-one-one, first of all, it's one hundred percent reimbursable by the federal government. It's part of an executive order signed by George W. Bush. And it happened shortly after September eleventh, two thousand and one. He felt it was necessary to be able to alert the public, the citizens about something dangerous. And again, that was supposed to be a learning lesson for September eleventh. Since then, we've had encounters where we've had active school shooters. In Sleepy Eye, the individual was gonna be coming over to New Ulm. We didn't publicize that. Fortunately, we were able to locate the individual beforehand, but we got a lot of feedback about that. Why wasn't this school contacted? Why wasn't this school contacted? Where literally, law enforcement was just trying to find the individual, and they were successful at it. So, it's a hundred percent reimbursable. I would take every measure to be taking advantage of resources that are available, and again, are essentially free.
We have to remember one thing. All these grants are great. And you have to remember, ongoing costs of a lot of these grants, we have to really look at that picture also. Safety is an important part of the, you know, community. We also don't wanna put any fear in anybody with these things. But we also have to look at, any grant that we receive, we have to look at it. They always put a carrot in front of us. Is there a maintenance cost on the end of this? I'm not sure of it. So, we have to look at that also down the road.
Mr. Berg?
I agree with Jeff a little bit on that, and I wanna add that even if it's federal funds, state funds, wherever it's coming from, that's somebody's tax money. It still has to be a good idea. And just initially, from what I've seen, it's certainly something to look at.
Any further comment, Mr. Cluxey?
Times are changing. If you get a grant, and it serves you well and serves your need, I think you have to pay the piper. That, why do I have an air converter on my car? That costs extra money. Because we're at that point where we had to change, and we had to absorb the price. I think we just have to absorb the price in the future.
Mr. Barker?
Again, it's a hundred percent reimbursable. As far as maintenance fees, there is maintenance fees involved with it. Those are also reimbursable. We're the only county, one of the only counties in the state of Minnesota that does not have this. So, as far as spending money, there's no such thing as free money. Federal money is all of our taxpayer money, but if we don't use it, literally someone else will. And we're one of the only ones that don't have it. And here's another concern I have. I think at the federal level, we're gonna have a wild roller coaster coming up. Everybody that works in government essentially kind of knows that. There could be a case, and I've seen that in the past, where FEMA starts de-obligating prior commitments, and they just simply don't provide this, or we're not gonna be able to get reimbursed for it. And then we're simply, kind of regarding that technology, we're in the dark ages. So, I think we owe it to our family and our citizens to take advantage of resources like this, and I feel strongly about that. Thank you.
What are the challenges facing the Sheriff's Department, and how would you address them? Mr. Berg would answer that one first.
When I talked to Rich, the one thing he mentioned is the jail, he's having to house people that are committing mostly misdemeanor crimes, and they have, I don't know how to put this the right way, mild mental problems. And I know there is no such thing, but it's not severe. But they end up being unsupervised, and sometimes they go off their meds, and they commit minor problems, and they end up in jail. And then the jail, according to the sheriff now, it ends up being kind of a proxy institution for them. And that's not the place for people that are suffering from that. They should be getting help somewhere, even if it's just phone calls, to keep them going, keep them on their meds, et cetera. So, and any program that's gonna deal with that is gonna probably come down from the state. We'd have to lobby the state for that, and that's where the funds would come from. But it is an issue that has to be taken care of, and he mentioned that that one was a high priority for him, too. The sheriff, I mean.
Mr. Cluxey?
As part of our society, we're becoming more violent. We're getting used to more violent violence. We're using more drugs. It's no surprise that the judicial system has to take the load on that. And I share the same concern.
Mr. Barker?
I work for the police department, which is, you know, city versus county, but again, related discipline. What I can tell you from a law enforcement perspective is drugs are soaring. Essentially, it's completely changed from twenty-three years ago when I got into the profession. It's much worse. And I can also tell you that the mandates coming down from the federal government, regardless of who gets into office, but I can assure you, the mandates are gonna be coming down, and they're gonna be pretty severe, and they're gonna be costly. I believe that one thing that we need to do as far as a smaller population is we need to work probably closer with, I'd wanna be working with the sheriff on working closer with other counties, 'cause there's a lot of cost sharing. As far as computer-aided dispatch, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. Literally, I believe in personnel. If they shared computer-aided dispatch, or consider that, they could save literally a hundred thousand dollars a year. And this isn't like a new sample. This isn't something that's just, "I'm thinking about." They're doing it in western Minnesota, and it's working. Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
I don't think there's too much of a problem with the Sheriff's Department. If, you know, as far as drugs, that's always, drugs, that's always gonna be a situation. You know, one of the better things, one of the best things we ever did was drug court, and we wanna continue those programs and make sure that there's plenty of money there for drug court. And I agree with everything else, what everybody else said.
Do you have any further comments on that one, Mr. Berg?
No.
Mr. Cluxey?
No.
Mr. Barker?
Again, with the concern with drugs soaring, I'm okay with those type of programs, but one of the biggest factors with individuals, when they were saying, "Well, we're gonna save money at the state level. We're gonna release all these individuals into society." I'm okay with that if there's some type of plan, but I can assure you, there wasn't much of one. We've even had overdoses in a three-county area regarding individuals that were let out of prison before I think they were ready to be let out of prison. So, again, that's something I think all of us in law enforcement, we need to work closer with probation on. I don't see a problem with the sheriff's office. I think Sheriff Huffman does a nice job. Thank you.
Mr. Golden, did you have any further comment on that question?
No, I just think if, you know, Dave's been with the police department now for five, ten years, and if there's a problem, he can walk forty feet over to Rich, and he can address some of these issues.
The next question, I think we have time for one more. In terms of delivery of human services, how do you see our community needs being met? And Mr. Golden would be first.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
In terms of the delivery of human services, how do you see our community needs being met?
Well, of course, with the social service program taking up, you know, a big part of our budget, a lot of people always roll their eyes when they say, "Cut the taxes, cut the taxes, cut the social programs." Well, my idea to them is that, yeah, we can try to cut some of them, but they're all mandated. A lot of them are mandated. Plus, the fact is, maybe instead of cutting some of the programs, maybe what we need to do is tell everybody what we have to offer. You know, we have a lot of great programs out there that people probably ain't utilizing. So, they're probably actually, we have the departments, and maybe some of the people ain't utilizing the departments the way they need to. For instance, we got the great transit system here in Brown County. We got a great nursing staff for down at Center. We have different things that we would really like to work off, so people could learn about all the social programs we have and not just criticize them. So, I think in the future, it would be nice, you know, it would be nice if we had, if I would become a county commissioner, I would love to have like commissioners' corner, take a department head, go on K U J, and say, "Hey, what do we got to offer in Brown County?" You know, instead of costing, you know, everything, saying, "It costs us this and that," show them what we're actually giving.
Mr. Berg?
Could you run the question again?
Sure. In terms of the delivery of human services, how do you see our community needs being met?
I had the privilege of speaking with Tom Henderson, and he is one heck of an advocate for the human services. He does a nice job. I think we do a pretty darn good job at that. Again, as Jeff had said, commissioners don't deal, you know, we allocate the money, but we really can't do much about it, because it is state-mandated. And, yeah, Tom does a great job with that, and I think we're doing all right.
Mr. Cluxey?
I think other counties recognize the gifted person we have in Tom Henderson. I applaud what he has done in the last two months. Number one, they're going to electronic filing. Number two, they have started the lean policy to check on their efficiency, which is an internal thing. And my one source said, "It's being well-received. Their efficiency is going to be improved." I'm gonna echo what I said at the beginning. Human services are gonna be taxed because of the aging population and the drug situation. And we're gonna be challenged financially, because those cases are going to increase, and we're gonna have to make sure that we have enough funds and people to serve the people.
Mr. Barker?
I believe that the delivery of human services are certainly being met as certainly as best we can in an effective and efficient manner. Tom Henderson and his staff really do a nice job. One thing that I'd like to point out is, even like as far as collection, we had, one of our employees that actually won an award recently was recognized because of the collection that they spearheaded with child support. And the other thing with the lean management, Tom Henderson was one of the first department heads that I talked to. And when I was talking about my thoughts with lean management, because I think that's a key with saving thousands of dollars a month for the benefit of the taxpayer, and, you know, he had told me that department was one of the first departments that was actually considering that. They were having some of the initial meetings. So, again, I think that that's a good idea. That's a good way to deliver services at the lowest cost.
Do you have any response, Mr. Golden?
No.
How about you, Mr. Berg? Mr. Cluxey?
There are always two sides to every issue. Every department can do two things. They can set an esprit de corps of efficiency within their department without going to an outside organization like lean. I looked at lean. It's kind of complex and burdensome. However, they're doing something. Either you do it internally with improving your own efficiency, or you use this outside mechanism. And so, they chose that, and I applaud them, and I think we're gonna benefit from it.
Mr. Barker, any further comments?
Yeah, I agree that lean is complex. There's actually a consultant from the League of Minnesota Counties. They'll send them down free of charge. I think that that's certainly a good use of money, at least as far as getting new thoughts. And, you know, one thing that Family Services deals with, again, is the state mandates and federal mandates. They don't have much control of it, but I think they do very well, from my experience. They don't have much control of it, but I think they do very well, from my experience, at managing those mandates. Thank you.
We'll now move to the closing remarks. Each of the candidates will have one minute. And, let's see, I think we'll go in the reverse order that we did with the opening statement. So Mr. Cluxem would be first.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight. Number one, thanks. Number two, thanks, it's probably not appropriate for you to do, but me to do. Thanks to Jim Berg for being a commissioner for such a long time and his contributions to Brown County. I just figured it must be over six hundred commissioner meetings alone, and he served on nineteen subcommittees. So I think we owe him a debt of thanks. I also want to thank all of those people who opened their door during my campaign. Even for a short visit, it was revitalizing for me. I want to close by saying that my life has been a life of service to others for fifty years in the teaching ministry. Now I wish to serve my county. I am retired and make this time commitment to you. There will be no adjustment to my schedule because this part-time job will receive full-time attention. Times are a-changing. I heard that from people. It is time for Roger Cluxem to be county commissioner, so remember, RCK on election day. In advance, I appreciate your vote for county commissioner.
Mr. Berg?
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. This is a great forum. It's good to be here. It's good to see the people here. Brown County is a great place to live. I've been here all my life, except three years in which I worked for the Jolly Green Giant. I've met a lot of people here through my business, through farming. I've also gotten to meet people, shaking their hands door-to-door. My experience in farming, my experience in business, dealing with the regulations that come with both those occupations, and also the pleasure I've had playing music at senior living places, getting to meet those people, getting little bits of real history that don't get recorded anywhere else from those people. That's all been a pleasure for me. And I'd like to keep on serving as your county commissioner, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
I also want to thank Dick Seaboof, Jim Berg for serving the past few years. They've been an asset to the county. Of course, everybody knows that Brown County ranks as one of the highest counties in Minnesota. And with you guys voting for me for county commissioner, it will remain that way. I'll be working full-time, not part-time. I have no ties to city. I have no ties to county. I have no ties to the state. I'll vote my conscience for what I believe is best served for the citizens of Brown County. And I want your vote on November eighth.
Mr. Burkert?
Again, I'd like to thank the league, the audience, individuals that were, you know, here in person and also viewing at home. And I'd also like to thank the other candidates for joining me tonight. I want to start off by saying that I understand what an oath of office is. Like any military veteran or police officer, I've taken an oath and honorably fulfilled this oath many times in my life. I've been committed to public service my entire life. The position of county commissioner is not a figurehead. It's a vital decision-maker. Commissioners make or should make vital decisions that could have impact on all of us. I'm convinced and concerned that we're in an extremely dangerous and challenging era. Give you examples, St. Cloud Incident. Not to politicize that, but we're in a challenging era. Because of my background with the military, law enforcement, and emergency management, I believe I have the best skill set to serve during this challenging and dangerous era. The county is the level of government that's responsible for domestic protection of their citizens. I'm qualified and prepared to serve in this role. Please consider supporting me in November by giving me your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the candidates for their participation tonight. We appreciate your willingness to be, to serve in office and to run. Thank you to New Cat and KNUJ for recording tonight. And special thank you to the Journal for being our partner this year. I thank you also to the audience. And thank you to the League of Women Voters members who are here tonight and who have been helping with timekeeping and keeping track of questions. Please, everyone, remember to vote on November eighth.